Mr. Chang, Ms. Green, Mr. Barrett, Ms. Adachi. Sometimes it's, you know, you sit back here and pick them up. No, it's okay. The time in the clock didn't go. All right, noting the time, presence of a quorum, I'll call us back into open session. So we'll start this meeting as we always do with citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens' concerns for issues not otherwise on the agenda? If you could just come up to the microphone, turn it on, and state your name and address, please.
Is that working?
That's working.
Okay, thank you. My name is Barry Elkin. I live at 57 Skyline Drive in Acton. I'm a resident advisor to the Board of Directors for the Quill Ridge community. And we have, many of the residents in the community have great concern about the proposed Town of Concord Water Treatment Plant being proposed next to Nagod Pond, as well as the solar panels. We've already attended one Conservation Commission hearing. We'll be attending a second one in early January. We're also doing some work. We'll be meeting with Planning and Engineering Departments to see if there are any issues there. And at the January 25th Board of Selectmen Meeting, we will be presenting more comprehensive arguments against construction of both those facilities, the water treatment plant and the proposed solar panel array. I just wanted to be here tonight to raise awareness about our issue and let you know that we do have great concerns about it.
Okay, we appreciate that. And, you know, you can always send those comments to us and to Lisa prior to the meeting. We make sure they get in their packets so people can review them, you know, before, coming tonight, that night, before the 25th as well. So that would be helpful.
All right, thank you.
Excellent, thank you for coming. Okay, are there any other citizens' concerns? Great, Chairman's update. First, on behalf of the Board, I want to thank the members of Procyneum Circus. They donated tickets to each member of the Board for their most recent production of The Man Who Came to Dinner. I understand at least Janet was able to go, or Peter, you were as well, and Franny. I had, I was unavailable that night, but did get my tickets to somebody who was quite grateful for them and said it was an excellent performance. So just thank you on behalf of the Board to, I assume, all the high schoolers watching our meeting tonight. Also, the just announcement that as of this past Saturday, the South Acton Train Station, the new station is now open. So unfortunately, I did not take the train this morning, so I haven't had a chance to see it. But it's pretty exciting. They're going to have a formal opening ceremony sometime early next year. But the next time you're down there, you'll get to board on each side of the tracks. And I think you went over it, Peter, or you went down there?
Ah, I did, yeah. I think they're only running trains on one side of the tracks right now, both ways, but I may be wrong about that.
That's not exciting at all. No, but you still get to go on the new platform, which is good, you know, to jump off on the rocks like you were for a while. See, and then just a few closings, you know, to remind people for next week, or excuse me, this week, this is frightening, that the transfer station was open today, but will be closed on Friday in recognition of Christmas. And the library will be closing at 3:00 on Thursday and be closed all day as Friday as well. Similar for Town Hall, Steve? Closing, closed on Friday.
We will be closed on Friday, too. I don't want to be like, you know, say we're open on Friday.
Yeah.
And we're closing at 3:00 as well on Thursday.
And the winners, the holiday notes, the winners of the Recreation's Jingle House Holiday Lights Contest were announced. So there were three categories, and I recommend, there were pictures on their Facebook page, but I recommend everybody try to drive by the houses. Presumably, their lights are still up. So the winner for the Reason for the Season House was 47 Stony Meadway. The winner under the Traditionally Elegant category was 5 Chadwick Street. And the winner of the Clark Griswold Award was 27 Arlington Street. So congratulations to all of those houses on their wonderful decorations. And just a reminder, we will have a meeting on January 4th, but we will also be having our Budget Saturday. We'll have Steve's presentation on the Town Manager's Budget in just a few moments. But the Budget Saturday is the chance for the Board of Selectmen and FinCom to delve more into depth, and everybody is welcome at that on January 9th. And I think that's it for me, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. The main thing I wanted to report on was I attended the semi-annual meeting of the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council in Boston last Wednesday because the application for Associated Environmental Systems, who have now located at 10 Post Office Square, had their application in front of the EACC for consideration for state tax credits. As you all recall, back in November, Town Meeting had approved a special tax assessment at the local level for AES, and this is kind of the next phase. So there were basically 20 similar projects in front of the EACC that day. And it's, it was kind of interesting, the EACC, Janet Paul Matthews from the 495 Initiative sits on that committee, as well as an old friend of mine, Bob Mercer, who used to be the Town Manager in Burlington before he retired. So it was kind of nice to see a couple of familiar faces. Richard Ellert of AES made kind of an abbreviated presentation, much more abbreviated than what we had seen in the past about the company. I was there to answer some questions on the town's behalf. And it seemed like the EACC was really more interested in my feedback as to how user-friendly their, the changes in laws have been for communities like Acton and things like that. So it was very positive. We had a unanimous vote out of EACC. They approved state tax credits to AES in the amount of about $236,000. So it was a very successful trip into Boston. And AES is rapidly occupying 10 Post Office Square. So that's all I have to report.
All right, I will read the notice for our 7:10 hearing. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on December 21st, 2015, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall on the application of Acton Management, Inc., 69 Great Road, under Acton Zoning Bylaw 10.4 for Site Plan Special Permit Number 11-06-15-458, Proposed Development of Four Single Family Dwellings with Associated Private Drive at 267 Great Road, Acton. The application of company site plans can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. And the applicant has requested and agreed to a continuance on January 4th, 2016, at 7:35 PM. Lisa, do we need to vote on continuing it, or it's, okay, we're good. All right, so we've swapped things around and pushed Steve's presentation up, so.
Thank you. This is louder, it's really, I was having a hard time with the volume earlier today. Thank you very much, and it's my pleasure to present the Town Manager's Recommended Budget for fiscal year '17. And it's, I think it's kind of ironic that today's the first day of, first day of winter, the winter season. It's, today is like the first day of budget season. Or if you're into sports, this is like the first pitch, and Town Meeting is the World Series, so to speak. But we always look for some pithy quotes to start off. And we found this from Walt Disney, that we keep moving forward, opening new doors and doing new things because we're curious, and curiosity keeps leading us down new paths. And I think what's important about this quote, at least from my own personal perspective, is, you know, I've been, I've been in local government management for a long time, and you never know what doors are going to open as you move through any given fiscal year or any decade. You know, just think like five or six years ago, the issue of OPEB was something nobody was really thinking about or dealing with. Yet that door has opened, and we've been trying to resolve that issue. Similarly, transportation. I mean, eight years ago, transportation in this town was just a very small idea coming out of our Transportation Advisory Committee. And now we have a nationally recognized transportation program. In technology, we've all seen what has happened with technology and what we continue to be able to do more and more of with technology. So this year, as we started the budget, we started with what we call "On the Hill", which is October 12th and 13th this year, where we had all the departments submitting their budgets, make budget presentations, and on the second day, we, similar to how the Board sets goal setting, we voted, well, how the Department Heads viewed the various priorities. We had about three points, excuse me, $32,440,290 in requests for operational and a little over $9 million in capital requests. As I said, the Department Heads' peers voted their priorities. And once that was approved, or once that process went through, our budget team started to do further budget review. And in addition to myself, the budget team consists of Mark Hall, the Assistant Town Manager, Steve Barrett, the Finance Director, Lisa Kraus, the Town Accountant, Mary Ann Fleckner, the HR Director. And this year, we invited the Police Chief, since he'll be retiring in about a year, and he's been a veteran of many, many budget wars. And so his insights into budget, we felt were, were very important. And so basically, since mid-October, we have cloistered ourselves away every Thursday and have been working on the budget. And I guess the easy thing to say was this budget is what we'd call "level service". There's, there's no new personnel requested. And we have met the Finance Committee's point of view of 3% increase. In fact, less than a 3% increase. As this, as the slide shows, our operational budget is up about 2.86%. Subsidies, and subsidies mean general fund contributions to enterprise funds is down about 24.8%. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. OPEB, our contribution to OPEB, up about 5.8%. We'll talk about that as well. And an increase in capital of about 52.91%, just from $158,000 to $242,000. So basically, when considering the operational budget subsidies, OPEB, and capital, the Town Manager's Recommended Budget is up 2.82%. Now, there's several features that I wanted to point out that's in the budget. Some of these are continuation of policies we started in the last couple of years, some a little longer, like our contribution to OPEB, continuation of our Senior Tax Relief Program, which we started last year, trying to fund the goals of the Board of Selectmen set back in June. Another goal was to lower the general fund subsidy to the ambulance enterprise fund. Also look at, as one of the Selectmen's goals, how do we integrate bike lanes to connect the two rail trails? Consider landscaping for the train station. Look at Kelly's Corner Design, Senior Center Design, a replacement of a fire engine, a replacement of an ambulance, a replacement of a fire shift commander vehicle. And then looking at replenishing the stabilization funds, putting $1,008,000 back into it from free cash because of the Walker property purchase that was authorized back in, back in August. Now, just to give folks an idea, and just where the money comes from to drive both the town and the regional budgets as we get ready for Town Meeting. And these, this pie is based on FY '16 primarily because we have not reached consensus on the, on the revenues yet at the Acton Leadership Group meetings. But as you can see, and it's no surprise, property taxes are the biggest source of revenue. In FY '16, it was 78.3%. State aid at 14.6%. Then you have XIs at 3.1%, local receipts at 1.7%. And last year, about 2.3% of the budget was made up with reserves. Once again, these are items that are, in most part, still being discussed at, at the ALG level. Our next meeting is January 7th, so we suspect we'll get some more clarification and some consensus on some of these items. But as you look at FY '17, these are kind of municipal budgets by function. And 35% of the budget is, is in the Finance Department. And Mr. Barrett has made me explain why it's so high. But the main reason is that embedded in the Finance Department budgets are all, all the benefits, health insurance, retirement, retirement costs of the retired teachers from the Acton Public Schools, our general liability insurance, things like that. So it's a lot more than just the personnel that make up the Finance Department that's in there. Also making about 25% of, or a quarter of the budget is our public safety operation. Other is just kind of everybody that doesn't fit in the other categories, kind of general administration, et cetera. So that's just a sense of, of kind of the functionality where the money goes. In terms of objects, and these are object titles determined by Department of Revenue, as you can see, the biggest share of the town budget is for personal, personal services or employees. And the other appropriation also represents, the bulk of which is health insurance, retirement, once again. So, you know, it's kind of clear that probably, you know, close to 70% of the town budget is personnel-related, 8% being debt, 12% purchase of services, and 4% supplies, and 2% capital outlay. Now, just because personnel is such a large cost center for the town, I thought it's important for the Board to see where we are at with our various unions. And we have five town unions. And basically, the amount of employees in the five unions represent probably very close to 2/3 of all the town employees. So we have, the Patrol Union has a, has, made up of 33 members. A contract term that we're negotiating currently would be for FY '16 to '18. We're under negotiation, we do not have any, any agreement at this point. Superior's in the Police Department, which are the lieutenants and the sergeants. There are eight people there. Contract term FY '16 to '18. You may recall that was settled and was approved at the Town Meeting on November 10th. The Dispatch Union, which is represented by the Teamsters, has 12 members. Once again, the contract term FY '16 to '18. We're still under negotiation with that and do not have any, any settlement. AFSMI, which represents the Highway Municipal Properties and Cemeteries Department, 26 staff members, FY '16 to '18. Once again, that was settled and was approved at Town Meeting on November 10th. And lastly, we have the Fire Union, 40 employees. They're a year behind all the other contracts, FY '17 to FY '19. We anticipate starting bargaining with them sometime early in 2016. Now, I want to talk a little about capital because capital, I think, as we get a little more into the presentation, is going to be, I think, a major focus for this budget and moving forward. In the general fund capital, and these are items that are basically in the operational budget, paying cash, so to speak. Painting Town Hall, which I know we have seen several times before, has been attempted to be funded through the Community Preservation Act, but has not. We have put that in the operational budget at $162,000. The Bike Lane Rail Trail Study that I talked a little about, how we do linkage between the two rail trails, is in the budget for $60,000. And I'm going to talk about this in a second, but we have capital bonding costs of $20,000. Now, we have some major projects that we are recommending be bonded for a term of five years. And that is the Kelly's Corner Study at $756,000, which will bring the Kelly's Quarter Project to the next logical step. Design of a senior center, a new senior center for $300,000. And then landscaping of the South Acton commuter lot, which you may recall was tentatively on the, on the Fall Town Meeting warrant, but we did not move forward on it. So the recommendation on that is to bond these three items for five years. This $20,000 cost would be the partial year's interest because we would not incur any principal within FY '17 except for this interest cost, and something we have discussed with our bond advisor. And just to give you a sense of where we're at with our bonding obligations right now, the red are the non-excluded debt, and the blue is excluded debt that the town has incurred and has incurred, I should say. Excluded debt is, is debt that has been approved by the voters to be excluded from Proposition 2.5, so we can raise the funds for this, those debt projects over and above 2.5. And they include some school projects like the twin, twin schools, the public safety facility, et cetera. The red are the non-excluded debt services, debt the town has authorized, but has been absorbed within the operational budget within Proposition 2.5. This gives a little better sense of the excluded debt. FY '16, it's a shade under $12 million, and by FY '23, it'll be pretty much gone. The non-excluded debt for FY '16 is a little under $2.5 million. And once again, by FY '26, FY '27, it will, it will be gone as well. And, and the reason I'm bringing this up because I think, as, as we all realize, this Board saw our presentation on an assessment of all our town buildings. We understand the region is going through a similar exercise. And, you know, and when we had our tri-board meeting back in October, there was general consensus, we need to have more of a concerted, focused view of, oops, sorry, I don't know what I did. Just had a 60s flashback for a second. Had a more of a, have a more concerted effort on, on capital planning. So within the budget document that you're getting tonight, under Volume 2, Tab 6, is a draft capital improvement planning committee charge. Because I think that, you know, when you start looking at the numbers that are in the town's building assessments and anticipating what the schools might look like, we're in for some major building capital over than foreseeable future. So I think it's very important for us to start looking at the long-term capital and come up with a strategy. And I think the timing is good because, as you see, our debt is, is going down and will be diminishing relatively rapidly. So I think the time is really appropriate to be, be looking at, looking at the capital issues. And as Katie noted, on January 9th will be our Budget Saturday. And that's an opportunity to really drill down and ask all the Department Heads questions about their operational budgets. But we're going to schedule some time on Budget Saturday to talk about long-range capital planning, using this charge of the committee maybe as a catalyst of, of trying to get this moving forward. Because I, you know, I think it's something that's obviously going to go well beyond FY '17. Now, one of the, one of the things that we typically have been doing in town is using some general fund money to subsidize, oh, excuse me, I'm jumping ahead. We have some other capital funded by other, some other sources, such as some revolving funds or, or enterprise funds, et cetera. I have an inspectional vehicle, the Health Department proposed to come out of the Food Service Revolving Fund, a yard tractor at the transfer station coming out of the Recycling Enterprise Fund, some capital machinery in the Sewer Enterprise Fund at $60,000. A study, a traffic study at Prospect in Maine, because it's a very awkward intersection there, kind of a three-way intersection, to look at how that might be improved coming out of our Chapter 90 allotment. A utility truck for the Highway Department coming out of our Chapter 90 state funding. And looking at improving the Parker Street Bridge with a combination of bonding through Chapter 90. And there's a couple of old bridge articles we might be able to apply to this. Finishing our street lighting out of our Energy Efficiency Fund. And the $90,000 I talked about, part of bonding was, it's under $80,000 to do the whole South Acton commuter lot landscaping. So proposal is to take $90,000 out of the parking lot fund and not So proposal is to take ninety thousand out of the parking lot fund and ninety thousand to be bonded. We also have, I think we missed that slide, but we do have an ambulance, a fire truck, and a command vehicle being proposed to come out of the Ambulance Enterprise Fund, and that to be bonded as well. Now, general fund subsidies, these are things we have used general funds to assist some of our enterprise funds. This year, we're proposing to use no general fund subsidy for the ambulance enterprise. We have a very healthy fund balance in ambulance enterprise, and we just didn't think was justified to have any general fund support to the ambulance. Transportation, the proposal is to have a two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar subsidy. You know, I think as we've talked over time, public transportation means subsidy, and that's probably what it's going to have to take to run our program for this year. Cultural Council is our annual support. I'm thinking in the future, we'll probably just embed that in the operational budget, because it's just such a small amount. Now, this is, this chart shows our OPEB liability if we contribute six-hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years, in essence. And UALL means unfunded actuarial accrual liability. So as you can see, in 2016, we're right around twenty-one million dollars of unfunded liability. And if we keep doing, whoops, wrong one, sorry. If we put six-hundred thousand in a year, you can see that by the year 2035, we are down to thirty-one thousand dollars in liability. So, you know, clearly, the efforts we have put into OPEB are really starting to pay dividends. We have an actuarial assessment of OPEB every two years. This is one we just got a month or two ago. You know, every time they do that, they look at actuarial issues, you know, look at our employees, make some assumptions on lifespan, et cetera. But to me, this shows that if we keep doing six-hundred thousand, you know, we're going to be relatively well off in the, I wouldn't say foreseeable future, twenty years is a long ways, but it looks like we're heading in the right direction. So every year, you know, we never know what we're going to get into. It always is new challenges. As Walt said, if you can dream it, you can do it. And I think, you know, we've been able to do a lot of very positive things with the town with the resources that we have. And I always love to quote Bill Mullen, because Bill once said this, when he was a member of the Finance Committee, that every year's a snowflake, so every year, there's going to be some different issues. No snowflakes the same, and no budget years the same. But like every year, this is going to be a little different. We don't know what challenges we're going to run into yet. I know the superintendent proposed his preliminary budget the other night. So, you know, clearly, a lot of the action is going to be at the ALG level and how we work on some of these things. And, you know, there'll be some challenges we'll have to look at, like the impact of federal healthcare laws, particularly the Cadillac tax, and to determine if some of our benefits are too rich, or we have to go back to the table with some of our unions. So as always, I look forward to working with the Board, with the Finance Committee, as we kind of work through budget season and head towards April sixth. You know, once again, we'll have Budget Saturday on January ninth. The Board has to vote a recommended budget to submit to Finance Committee sixty days prior to town meeting, so sometime before February sixth, the Board will have to make a recommendation. So we'll need to figure out our schedule after Budget Saturday about that. But without him, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Are there questions or comments from Board members? Start at this end, Janice?
Yeah, I was wondering, I was wondering if the proposal for the South Acton train station landscaping, if it took into consideration the fact that, I mean, I had just learned, and I forgot where, that the, some of the Assabette River Rail Trail landscaping is going to cover some of the area that originally the Satzac had proposed for, out of, for one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars in the town operating budget. And so I gather that the amount that they would be looking for from the town would be reduced somewhat, but I didn't know what, you had a ninety thousand dollar figure, something listed for.
Well, ninety thousand, it was one-hundred-and-eighty thousand. Ninety thousand was to be bonded, ninety thousand to come out of the parking lot fund. So to answer your question, the impact of the Assabette is not taken into consideration. That's something we'll have to look at.
Okay. And then, I was wondering, could you remind us of what the contribution to OPEB is projected to be for the, I think, I know there's a target that the OPEB Committee had set, and it's not six-hundred thousand, is it? It's somewhat lower for the town side, anyway.
Well, I'll ask Steve, because Steve sat on the OPEB Working Group. I don't remember off the top of my head.
So, one-point-four million was the total contribution for the town and the region? Both entities have just received their actuarial, so I think the schools is going up. You know, that number, you know, our number may be a bit high proportionately, but it, as the town manager said, that six-hundred thousand a year will give the town a really good spot for valuation purposes. But the total at ALG, I think, was one-point-four million.
What, just one follow-up. What did we put in last year? Like, I've forgotten which year it was when we kind of put in extra, but then I assume we went back to what was supposed to be our normal contribution.
I think we put an extra two fiscal years ago, I believe. And also keep in mind, we've always put in a little extra, because when we budgeted for new positions, we put in the so-called OPEB factor, which we continue on with new positions. So I'm not sure that we've taken that into account in terms of our obligation, or in terms of our impact on our unfunded liability.
We put about five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand in last year, FY sixteen, and we're proposing to go to six-hundred for FY seventeen.
Okay, so it's not really a stretch. I was just wondering if that was sort of encouraging us to increase our contributions, but, okay, thanks, that's all. Peter?
I didn't see a contribution to the nursing service. Is that anticipated to break even this year?
Keep it in mind, the nursing service, based on a town meeting vote of a year ago, is in the general fund now. So it's no longer an enterprise fund. The enterprise fund was abolished, so it's just another operational general fund budget.
So we'll see that on Budget Saturday as part of the budget, okay?
Correct.
Now, I just want to note, we had a very good year last year, even though we held tax increases to two-and-a-half percent, right? The town underspent about one-hundred-and-ninety grand on their budget, which is really a testament to the way that the administration manages expenditures. And we got about a million dollars in one-time revenue through tax title returns or whatever. So our reserves should actually be a little higher than they were last year. So I commend you on that. Thank you.
Ching Sun, questions or comments?
So, thank you. I think, you know, it's good to reiterate what you said, that I think it's nice to point out that this budget does meet the Finance Committee's point of view, and comes in under three percent, their three percent recommendation, and it also has sort of our part of their recommended level of the OPEB funding. So, you know, we're kind of meeting it on both those fronts. And, you know, I think it's important to point out that OPEB chart, because I would be interested to know what other towns in the Commonwealth are projected to have their OPEB liability, you know, go away by 2035. And I would imagine it's very few. And so I think, I mean, there are some towns that are not dealing with this at all. We've been incredibly proactive, and that's paying off, and I'm glad that we're continuing to do that. So hopefully, both the town and region will continue on that path. So I just want to say I'm appreciative of that. And I think there, you know, there's no, as you mentioned, there's no sort of general level service budget. There's no necessarily exciting new things in here, but I think that's a big part of why we can keep it at this level. But there are some, you know, I think there are some interesting things in the capital, and I'm, of course, quite happy to see the study for the bike lanes and connecting the two rail trails, so I appreciate that. But overall, you know, I mean, I think, again, it's a quite reasonable budget that comes in under the target of Finance Committee, you know, continues forward, doing all of the things we have been doing. And I look forward to discussing the details of it on Budget Saturday.
Nobody asked me what color Town Hall was going to be.
Yeah. Blue, I hope. I don't know, I don't think that was any of the colors that Dean found when he drilled through. Are there any questions or comments from audience members? No, all right. Pretty painless. Okay, I didn't know, I thought you had a comment, Steve. I did like to, it was important to point out that your budget is not just your over-inflated salary, making up thirty-five percent of our, okay, excellent, all right. Well, then, we will move on. As I said, we're switching some things around tonight, so we are actually going to do the report. Oh?
I'm happy with the online version. So you can save those for some of the folks on FinCom who still want paper.
It's the Town Employee Fitness Program. Carting those books around.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, so we are going to go to number five, the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee Report. I believe that Andy is here tonight. Did you want to intro, Peter, or did you want to intro?
You're good.
All right, Andy, would you like to take it away?
Okay. Hi, I'm Andy Brockway. I'm Chair of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. So I'd just like to report on where we're at and give you a brief update. We're actively working on completing the final report. We've received some earlier drafts from the consultant, and we weren't quite satisfied with that work, and so we've decided to take on the task of finishing the report ourselves. We will, we're anticipating having the report done in the middle of January or latter part of January. So, once that report's done, or just slightly prior to it, we'll be engaging in a series of outreach efforts on the plan. And the biggest one is, on February fourth, there'll be a public forum, similar to the ones we've had in the past, and this will be a rollout and presentation of the final report. Prior to that, there are a series of efforts we'll engage in to connect with the general public and with the town and Board. So in particular, with the town and Board, sort of discussion like tonight, in early January, I think the eleventh, I'll go talk to the Finance Committee, eleventh or twelfth. Also plan on talking to EDC. And if time allows, if we get a chance, also to talk to certain school and PTSO committees, all in attempt to sort of get out the word about what the process is and what the upcoming meetings are. We've also produced a two-minute video. We have a rough sketch of that now. It's similar to one, I think, that was produced for the initial report back a couple of years ago, for an initial design effort. And so we have a rough cut. What we'll do with that is, we'll have it available on ACTN-TV. We'll also send it out by email to the contacts that we do have. Their other efforts include letters to stakeholders, like the Kelly's Corner Neighborhood. We'll send the ones out to them, in particular, interested stakeholders. The general sort of broad outreach through email and social media contact. Somewhat related to all of this is that we're finally updating the ACTN-2020 website, and so hopefully, that will be up and running by February first. And we can use that as another place to both post the report and sort of in general, publicize the efforts. After the public forum on February fourth, there will be a Planning Board hearing. Looks like tentative date now is set for February twenty-fourth. And so there are two aspects, basically, of the plan, just to sort of back up for a second. There are two main aspects of the plan that we'll ultimately go to town meeting with. One is on infrastructure improvements, and others on zoning amendments. And so the zoning amendments need to have a, the warrants need to have a public hearing. And so again, that's on February twenty-fourth. So that's about twenty days after the public forum. I'll give people who are interested a chance to sort of review the plans and make comments prior to the meeting. A draft version of the proposed amendments has already been sent out, proposed zoning amendments, has already been sent out to various property owners within Kelly's Corner, and we have received back a few comments. I know Roland is planning to meet, Roland has already met with several property owners. I know some or others are going to come in and talk in particular about the amendments. And we can incorporate their comments to extent that they're, make sense into the plan. As I said, in town meeting, there are, well, we will come to town meeting in April, and then there are two aspects of it. It's the infrastructure and the zoning amendments. On the infrastructure piece, we need to complete the initial, we need, we have a design up to about ten percent, and we need to complete the design work. And so we're going to come and ask for funding there. Steve, I'm not sure whether you had that in the budget tonight or not. Yeah, okay. All right, we made it, at least to the budget. So we'll come to town meeting, and we're asking for money to complete the engineering documentation. And so the seven-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, we'll be asking for. That's the, that will be it, in terms of having documentation. And that number was arrived at by, sort of, Mass Department Transportation has a standardized or scope of services guidance, and so you develop an anticipated fee scope out of that. And so that's where the numbers are coming from. Part of the, initially, this project was intended, anticipated to be a relatively smaller, three-million-dollar construction project, and the scope of the project has increased significantly, upwards of between nine and twelve million in terms of construction costs. And so that has also dictated an increase in sort of the design scope. The other piece, again, is the zoning amendments, and there are three aspects of that. There will be some dimensional requirement changes, some allowable use changes, and then most important, I think, is that there will be a new master planning process for the larger parcels of land, or, so. And that's sort of the basic updates between now and town meeting. And there's more beyond that, of course, if we make it through town meetings.
Thank you, Andy. Are there questions from Board members?
Andy, I just wanted to thank you for keeping us, keeping us apprised of the status. I know this is a big undertaking, and it's tough to sometimes get before us, but I do appreciate your taking the time to regularly update us, so. And kudos to Peter, if he's prodding you a bit for doing that. Thank you. Peter?
I just have a couple of comments. Our site plan study, Site Plan Special Permit Study Group has been meeting. And one of the things we've been considering is this part of the new zoning amendments that would, as proposed now, make the Planning Board the Special Permit Granting Board for this new Kelly's Corner overlay district. And we're going to make a recommendation to the selectmen about, is that a good idea? Is that not a good idea? You have to conceive of this zoning amendment and the master plan overlay district, it only applies to projects that are over fifty thousand square feet. So, and really, I think the only two, you can correct me, Andy, if I'm wrong, the only two sites in the whole district that are that large right now are Kmart and Roach Brothers, which is already pretty much a parking lot, but, and a strip mall. But it does have inducements for other property owners to join together or acquire larger pieces of property, because there are incentives for building under this new overlay district. So. So, but right now, if it were to pass the way it's proposed, for projects over 50,000 square feet, the Planning Board would be the Special Permit Granting Authority. But for any projects under 50,000 square feet, it would be the current zoning. So, the Selectment would still be, you know, the Permit Granting Authority for smaller projects. So, you know, it complicates the situation more. The new Economic Development Director, I'm hoping, will get involved and provide us some insight into how that person looks at this coming from the outside. Our committee is wrestling with whether we ought to take on the larger issue of all the site plan permits, special permits, and that go to various boards, and is there some way to streamlight that to meet the goal of making it easier for developers, developers to understand this whole process? I will say that also Ann Chang is on our committee. I assume Don is still gonna be the moderator for this meeting, right? Does he, he doesn't turn over until after?
After Daniel.
Yeah, okay. She is recommending very strongly that we hold a special, separate night for the Kelly's Corner zoning amendments and infrastructure improvement. Bonding issue, it'll be now under the budget, right? I've told her, I think that's gonna be very difficult, but I know there's gonna be a lot of issues, Minuteman Schools, big money issue, we got the issue of the Kelly's Corner landscaping money, there are other big money issues on the budget that will take up some time. In my 20 years here, Kelly's Corner, I said this to the committee, is worse off now than it was when I first moved here in 1988, despite having had 18 study committees to look at it in those 26 years or whatever. This is the one committee that I've seen over that period of time that really has a plan that has some possibility of making changes in Kelly's Corner, particularly the infrastructure improvements. It'd take a long time, you have to prime the pump, that's why we have to pay for the design, to get to 100% design, to get access to the federal and state money that's available, and it might take a long time to get that funding, but we anticipate that federal and state money will be available to pay for the actual construction of the infrastructure improvements, this $9 to $12 million, and Andy mentioned, assuming Town Meeting agrees to appropriate the funds to bond the money for the design. And there are some issues with that because that cost has increased also, but, so those are the kind of things that I'm seeing from where I am. I wanna second Janet's commendation to Andy. There's a lot of people in town who do a lot of time and effort into helping the town improve its services. Andy is one of the ones I've seen who commits as much time as anybody, a lot of 7:00 AM meetings. So, thanks very much. I think the committee's done yeoman's work, and the presentation that you will see will be a great improvement to what we've seen happen in Kelly's Corner over the last 20 years, so.
Questions or comments, Jingsun?
Yeah, I'll just, third, our thanks, Andy. You know, this has been a long process, a lot of work has gone into it, and we appreciate both you and the committee members doing that. And I appreciated hearing sort of the plan for rolling out the proposals. I think that sounds good and like you're doing the right kinds of public outreach. As I mentioned, I mean, it's really important to try to hit up these, you know, different groups, make sure you're talking to the different constituencies, as you have been all along, but, you know, continuing to update them and get their feedback is important. I appreciate how thoughtful the committee has been in doing that and clearly continues to be. So, I look forward to all of that unfolding and obviously, you know, whatever we can do to assist.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Two audience members. Okay, well, thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We'll see you soon.
Alright. Okay, we are a little early for our 8:15, so why don't we do maybe number seven, the modular homes? So, Steve, do you want to talk about that?
You have in your packet a letter from, from the Redmans seeking to gift the town the three modular houses that are kind of the corner of Quarry and Rex Lane. And there is a CPC application in front of the committee to, to a comfort station up at Miracle Field and also one near the bathhouse, kind of where the volleyball, the beach volleyball is right now. And the thinking has been through Recreation that these three, three homes be converted into, into comfort stations, two being combined up at, up at Miracle Field for men's and women's facilities, plus like a snack bar, and then one for use down by the lower parking area. And the reason for that is the anticipated demand for bathrooms as the rail trail commences. So, as I said, the, both, both, both projects are in front of the CPC right now. The Redmans want to gift this to the town, and I wanted to talk to the board about it because there's certainly ramifications if, if these buildings are accepted. One, we would have to do something with them on a short-term basis, perhaps even put foundations in where they might be located, which probably costs about $60,000 to $80,000. There's also the moving of the facilities, which, my understanding, the Miracle Field folks would probably kick in about $35,000 towards the moving of the two buildings, and I think the total cost of moving is $60,000. So, there's some cost the town would incur to accept these buildings and not knowing how CPC is going to rule on them, so to speak. You know, accepting them may very well mean that the town is into doing these projects with or without CPC. So, I wanted to talk to the board, get the board's feelings, and obviously, the board needs to decide how they want to proceed with, with these three buildings. Because, I mean, the comfort station issue at Miracle Field, I think this is the second year that has been in front of CPC. The one that may be more related to the rail trail, this is the first time anybody has seen that, that request, and, you know, it's not necessarily determined what kind of bathroom demand, so to speak, would be from the rail trail, but there's certainly a potential for that being there, considering there's no other place to go except the woods. So, really wanted to discuss this with the board and get the board's feelings.
And just before I take questions, because I'm the rec liaison, so this is sort of their proposal, and they're the ones that have brought them to CPC, the, just to clarify about the one at kind of the lower part for the rail trail, I think their, their concern is that the bathrooms that are currently there are already overused, and so, it would provide, you know, additional bathrooms for the current use, as well as what they anticipate to be increased use resulting from the rail trail. And then also, I think they were concerned using it for office space because their existing office space is limited there. So, there's some multiple uses, but, you know, a number of, I'll get into my comments later, but just wanted to clarify that. Questions or comments from board members? Peter?
You know, being on the CPC, you'll remember when we voted to move the town proposals to the CPC this year, I requested that we not rank them in order. I just, we had issues last year with the CPC, didn't seem to me to be a really valuable exercise to the same day we got presented with these ten, ten or so projects, to just try to rank them immediately and scribble, you know, one, two, three, four, five, and then come up with the top rankings. Once we got into the details of the projects, last year, going through the CPC process, I felt differently about some of the projects than I did when I first ranked them, when they came in, and that caused some tension on the CPC in voting to approve projects. So, we'll be coming back to the Selectment, and I've talked to the CPC about this. They would like ranks, ranking of the town projects from the Selectment. We have private projects also, as we do every year, but, so I will get you a list of all the projects at the beginning of January. We're not meeting with REC until January 7th, I think, so I'm gonna ask you to hold off until the second meeting in January to actually rank these, and I'll get back to you with how the CPC or the, we've asked, we're gonna ask REC to tell us which are their ranking order because right now, they have a million and a half dollars worth of projects before us. We only have a million two to give away and lots of other projects that are very deserving. So, that would be my question. I have a feeling the CPC is not gonna be able to fund both of these bathrooms. I think they're $500,000 a piece, and the Miracle Field one is in the $500,000 range. What happens to these homes if, if they don't fund the bathrooms?
I assume they may be demolished, I don't know. There's, it looks to me like there's one family still living in one of the homes, the other two are vacant. I don't know what will happen if we don't take, take them, I'd have to.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're asking us to accept the gifts pretty quickly, I think. So, if we do that and, and we don't fund the bathrooms...
That's my worry.
Yeah, where do the houses go? Do they still just get moved there and?
That's my worry, that's what I want to talk to the board. I don't know what we do if we don't move forward. I mean, you know, I included nothing in the FY17 budget for these because they were, are being pursued through CPC, so unless the board wants to rearrange some priorities within that budget, I don't know what we would do.
So, there's no alternative plan at all for any potential uses for these at all? It's just would be these bathrooms and that's the only potential use we have?
Well, that's the only thing that has been proposed to us. I'm not sure what else we would do with them, you know, frankly. You know, we do tend to inherit a lot of buildings over time, and they become problems. So, I don't know.
Janet?
Can you remind me what the, the application to CPC, it's for use, incorporating these houses or building new units?
Incorporating the house.
Incorporating these, okay.
REC has gotten a design through Michael Rosenthal of how they would be designed and incorporated.
Okay, I've forgotten the details, okay. So that, because I assume that just building these new, they obviously, are they, were they already talking, or maybe you would know, Katie, were they already talking about having facilities put in these different locations, or was this sort of an opportunity that came along and then they realized that maybe they should take advantage of it or try to?
The Miracle Field Comfort Station is something that they've been talking about for a number of years, and that was proposed as a new building to CPC last year and wasn't recommended by CPC. They, so they've been talking about that one for a long time, and, and again, REC, we can, if we keep calling it bathrooms, they want them called comfort stations because they're more than that, and especially if you think about the needs of Miracle Field. So, there aren't any restrooms up there, and then they need more accessible restrooms. So, so that one's been talked about. The three homes is sort of what prompted, the potential donation of the three homes is what prompted the idea for the one down by the bathhouse. So, that's sort of more of a taking advantage of this offer as opposed to the two. And I, you know, I don't know what they would be willing to do if, say, we were willing to accept two of the homes as opposed to all three. I'm not sure.
Are they just gonna, they're just gonna demolish them, right? If they, yeah. Because I, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a priority, just because obviously, the Miracle Field was on, you know, it's already sort of on, on record as needing something there, and so, but when you said foundation, $60,000 to $80,000, is that per foundation?
My understanding, that was total.
Okay, for the three.
For all three.
Okay, and then there's the moving costs, which you said was?
I think $60,000, but Miracle Field folks look like they would maybe put in about $35,000.
Okay, okay.
But that, but it'd only be for, obviously, the, the septic system has to be built too, correct?
Oh, oh, okay.
Actually, either side, both sides. I think so.
So, question, if we don't take these houses and end up doing the comfort station projects anyway, which it sounds like there's some impetus to do anyway at some point, how does that change the costs associated with the, with those projects?
I would assume the cost would go up because you'd have totally new construction from scratch, whereas you've got two buildings that are, you know, already there, so to speak. The real cost would be more how they, the two get integrated with each other, and then, you know, some architectural aesthetic work on it. So, I would assume it'd be a little less by accepting the buildings.
Peter, do you remember what the proposal was to CPC last year for the Miracle Field Comfort Station? Because I can't remember what it was for.
The number was like $680, $680, $685, sticks on my head.
That's what, yeah.
They had, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much we're saving.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
By, by taking these, by taking these things on those projects, right?
You know, the CPC, I, my sense, and Katie probably has a better one than me, talking to the REC Commission, is that NARA is stressed. It's, it's attracting people from all over the eastern half of the state, so there are very, very large crowds there. One thing we didn't anticipate, well, maybe we did, but certainly, the rail trail's gonna bring larger crowds. I think the CPC's sense is we'd like to see the master plan for this, and is there, isn't there some master plan study going on to?
REC, REC is working on a master plan. That has been part of the goals I've set for that department, a goal with master plan. So, they are, they are doing it, they're doing a master plan, correct?
And they should have one, I think the draft is early, or mid-January, and they just, they completed a NARA survey, you know, they, they sent out a survey and asked people, and one of the big things that came back again was the availability and then cleanliness and overuse of the restrooms, that's part of it. I think, I, so my general, I mean, I, you know, I, I think the Miracle Field one, the, I see more of a need for the modular homes, and that, that's something that we actually would be pursuing, because I think it's something we've been talking about anyways. It's hopefully something that the CPC would be more inclined to support. And there's a private group that's willing to do fundraising, you know, for the moving of them, and that also would potentially do fundraising for, you know, to help defray some of the costs of constructing it, you know, and they, the people that built the Miracle Fields, I think, have also indicated their willingness to help with some of the actual construction, although there's issues around prevailing wage related to that. But, you know, those are, those are possibilities. So, there's a, there's kind of a group that's established already that's willing to, and able to, to kind of do the fundraising efforts to kick in, you know, more reliably kick in some support for this. My concern, you know, I see the need for the rail trail one, and I'm sympathetic to the REC Department, and is an interesting opportunity, but I think my concern is that it, I just don't know that the idea is far enough along and that there's enough kind of outside support, that if this isn't funded by CPC, and I get a sense that it probably wouldn't be, because there's a lot of money being asked for this year, and taking one or both of those out would solve a big part of that hole, and they've been reluctant to fund some of the REC projects in the past. I don't think it would go forward, and I think we would end up with another building, and we've gone down this path in the past quite frequently, where we end up with some buildings on our hands at, you know, Harris Street and in our backyard and a couple other places, and, right? So, we've got, we've got a couple, a couple buildings on our hands that, you know, end up, I would say, causing problems, but, you know, if we don't have a clear plan and funding path for them, they end up being more of a liability than a benefit. So, I think it would be personally worth going back to REC Lumber and seeing if they'd be willing to donate the two, maybe the two of them instead of, or Redmond Corp, sorry, the two of them instead of the three as a, as one possibility. That's just a personal recommendation, so.
Peter?
Yeah, I'm just looking at last year's applications. It doesn't look like they put in for Miracle Field last year, it was, maybe. I, I wasn't on it then.
Yeah, maybe it was two years ago.
It was the NARA, they wanted a restroom for the new picnic pavilion, that was $105 grand. Yeah, we didn't fund that.
Yeah, it was two years ago.
And I think another reason the CPC had questions about funding some of these larger REC projects is the funding for, the whole funding for NARA Field. I mean, could it be turned into an enterprise fund instead of, as my understanding is, with the recreation accounts, they have to be spent down... with the recreation accounts, they have to be spent down to zero every year, as opposed to an enterprise fund that can build up some reserves. That means setting fees at a rate to maybe raise some reserves, which, you know, how much you charge people and how much they're willing to pay is a tough call sometimes. So, but we, we, they're going to be questions coming back about how you fund this thing and maybe there's a better way to do it.
So any other comments from the board? I mean, I think we need to give Steve some direction on going back, read this donation. I mean, it sounds like we're not ready to necessarily accept it tonight.
Do we have any kind of direction as far as if, I mean, I'd agree that, you know, going back to Tom and asking if he's willing to donate two of them is a reasonable thing and I think that makes sense as a path forward. But is, do, do we want to give Steve some direction as far as what happens if Tom says no?
So Tom, Tom works for us. Tom's the Natural Resources Director. It's the Redmonds.
Sorry, Redmond Corp.
That own the homes. I mean, we'd have to come back to this board to discuss that.
Okay.
Right.
All right. So, yeah.
Does that sound okay, this end of the table?
Sure.
Okay. So you got a sense? All right. Why don't we do the consent agenda? That should put us right about eight fifteen. So I will read through these. If anybody wants to hold anything, just please say hold. Number eight, request for refund from the Building Department, refund for permit application fee by Integrity Building and Design for the amount of one thousand fifty-seven dollars. Lisa, my one question on these is that the Engineering Department, or the Building, excuse me, Building Department recommends refunding fifty percent of the fee. So is that, I mean, do we need to hold these and specify that? Yeah. Okay, so let's hold that. Number nine, request for refund, Building Department, refund for building permit application fee by Vivint Solar for the amount of six hundred and ten dollars. So I'll hold that. Yeah, sorry. Number ten, one day alcoholic beverage license, St. Elizabeth of Hungary Youth Ministry, April 2nd, 2016. Hold. Hold, okay. Number eleven, one day alcoholic beverage license, Jinji Tang, January 17th, 2016. Number twelve, request Weaver Fees Pan Mass Challenge Kids at NARA Park, June 5th, 2016. Number thirteen, request for streetlight placement, High Street and Simon, Simon Willard Road. Number fourteen, request for pole relocation, High Street Eversource. And number fifteen, request dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Janet, you held number ten.
Yeah, I was wondering if they had submitted a TIPS certification or something like that because they're having, they're having a fairly large group and, and he said it was okay. So, I mean, apparently, all right, well, if he says it's okay.
Yeah, because it was like a hundred and ten people. I also noticed on the form now, there's not a place to check if you're going to have the TIPS certifi-, we just took it off.
Okay. Because I, you know, because I know that with prior applications, people have submitted this TIPS certification. I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not until April, I think, so.
So do you want to maybe make a motion to approve a contingent of tips?
Well, I'll just, I'll move that we approve the application of St. Elizabeth's for an alcoholic beverage license sometime in April, contingent on their providing, Lisa, with a copy of the TIPS certifications.
Somebody want a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, and then let's do, if I could get a motion on consent items eleven through fifteen.
Move to approve consent items eleven through fifteen?
Second. We'll go ahead, Peter, for a second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, so eight and nine, you know, again, the Building Department's recommended just refunding fifty percent of each of the fees, so I don't know if somebody wants to make a motion to that effect.
I move to recommend items eight and nine for reimbursement of fifty percent in accordance with the Building Director's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. All right. We're getting pretty close to eight fifteen, so. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice on December 21st, 2015 at eight fifteen PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room at Town Hall on the application of North End Pizzeria of Acton, Inc., 168 Great Road, Acton, under section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a Common Victular License. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there anybody here tonight from North End Pizzeria? Okay, would you guys mind coming up? You could just sit in these two chairs and if you could just introduce yourselves. Yep, those two, and if, just hit the button with a face to turn on the microphone. If you want to just state your names and what you're requesting tonight, that would be great. So do you want to just introduce yourselves and what you're asking for?
Yes, my name is Yoda de Silva.
Okay.
I'm a car, I'm an owner of my sister-in-law over there, a good pizza place. We need a license for next year.
Okay.
But I think my manager didn't handle before. We still have a license from the other pizza. We changed the name.
Okay.
Was A B Pizzeria, now we have the name's Notch End Pizzeria.
Okay, so this is really just kind of cleaning up paperwork, okay. Does anybody have any questions? Janet, I looked like you did. Nope, okay. Motion?
I can move, move to approve the application for a common victualer's license.
Second.
Okay, any, I forgot to ask if there were any questions from the audience. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. You too. Probably, I don't know. All right, I'm going to read the twenty-one real slow and we will just get from there. Unless you think we can do Minute Man in five minutes, Janet? I know. No. It's like thirty-five minutes. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on December 21st, 2015 at eight twenty PM, continued from November 16th, 2015, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall for, in order to show cause for an alleged over-service incident at Team Works Doing Businesses Overtime Bar, 30 Great Road, Acton, on August 28th, 2015. The documentation may be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. Is there anybody, did we, Lisa, did anybody from the Concord Police agree to come? Okay, so we don't have, so are there anybody here from Overtime Bar tonight? Thought you guys, okay. So do you want to? And actually, can I, Janet, do you want to swear everybody in first?
Yes, is, are there other people who are going to be speaking?
Yes, let me just, I'll go quickly. I'm, my name is Eric.
So sorry, before you start, we want to swear. If you have witnesses that you want to speak on behalf of the restaurant, you need to have, I need to swear them in. Are there, are any of you folks going to be?
Yes, do you want me to identify them first for you?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. I just need them to stand up and hold their hands up so they can be sworn in.
Okay, so first of all, I'm Eric Zucker. I am counsel for Team Works, which is the facility in which Overtime's Bar is. Tom Moore is the owner. Chris Wallace is the general manager. Ethan Robidoux is the adult league director for the facility and was the bartender, the evening in question. And Kate Milheim is the youth league director and is the designated bar manager. And any or all of them to whom the board has questions will be answering this evening.
Okay, raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay, all right, so if you could just introduce the situation.
Excuse me?
If you want to just give an overview of the situation, that would be helpful and then we can.
Well, as we understand it, there is an assertion of over-serving on the evening in question. As we've been advised, a patron of the bar was stopped a little bit further down the road shortly after closing and the Concord Police stopped her and determined that she was inebriated, gave her a blood alcohol test, it came out over the limit and, as is standard inquired, where she had had her last beverage of the evening and she indicated the overtime bar at Team Works. And we are here to answer any old questions that the board has.
Great. Questions from board members?
We have an executive session earlier this.
Yeah, we're going to do that once we ask questions first. So we do that in open session.
I see.
Yep. So Janet?
Yeah, we have in our packet a receipt, or two receipts, and then there's a very long tab. And I, I don't really understand if the big tab is for everybody or if this is for a group and the two separate ones are for the individual in question. I appreciate some clarification of the, the three receipts that we have in our.
I know, Mr. Robidoux was the bartender on the evening in question to respond to that.
Okay. Do you, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, yeah. There was a group in there prior to, it's a group of coaches. They had a staff meeting that evening and one of the members of that group was part of the group later in the evening. So it's basically two separate tabs from a group that were earlier in the day that was paid off later that evening and another tab that was for the group of men from the rental that came in after their rental to pay that off.
Okay, so are the two, I'm wondering which one of these tabs is, refers to the person who, who got stopped and said she had been at your place before? Do you, because I, I don't, I'm just, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out what the connection is.
Chris can probably answer that better than me.
Okay.
They're both form of payments that she made towards her tabs. So she was in there with two separate groups and that's payment for, you know, for both groups. So it wasn't, you know, all those drinks on, on, on the receipts aren't all hers.
I figured the stuff on the right-hand side was a group, I was hoping.
Yeah, no, and they, they both were. They were both groups. So she was just paying a portion of, you know, of whatever they, however they divided it up.
Okay, so the two on the left are really, it looks like those are individual tabs. That's what I'm saying. Anyhow, I'm just trying to get a sense. She said that she had, what, one Corona, two Coronas, but I didn't know whether the documentation was pertaining to her or?
None of the tabs are just her.
Okay.
The two tabs that she signed for.
Yeah.
Are also group tabs of varying numbers of people.
Okay.
And the third tab was just a separate tab for a broader group. So beforehand, before they had their adult league game, there was a group of people in who had had a staff meeting and had a few beverages. And then after the game, as is not uncommon, the players come back in and sit and have a beverage or two before going home and pick on each other depending on who won. So none of these are individual tabs for just the individual in question. The two she signed are for some unknown number of people.
For more than just her, okay.
In addition to her.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I mean, I have some questions. So the timing of these tabs, though, they're, they all look like they were closed out at similar times, but you said one was from before the game and one was after. They, they just close it out after the end of the game? The, the large one?
Yeah.
Okay. And then can you speak to, so did she, do you remember her being there that night?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and so do you remember what she ordered from what you recall? What she ordered off of these?
Her specifically, no, because there were multiple times she came up and got, like in the tabs, multiple drinks.
Okay.
But usually it was a Corona with a strong bone.
Okay. And you don't know how many of those were for her versus for?
To my recall, she had like three or four, from what I remember, yeah.
Okay, three to four Coronas, okay. And over how long a period? Because I don't, this doesn't say when they came in.
Um, it's over the span of like three, three hours.
Okay. And then, so, so were all of these drinks, they're just people coming up to the bar and getting them and going back, so you don't, you're not doing tableside service?
No, I, no, there was one table that was off to the side. Everything else is right there.
So generally, how do you guys deal with knowing, you know, if people are just coming up to get drinks for other, you know, I think there's concerns about, that's where you can run into over-service issues if somebody's coming up and getting a drink for somebody else. You know, I think knowing when somebody in that group has been, has had too many. So what, you know, I mean, what, I think were your steps or are your steps that are in place to make sure nobody in the group is being over-served?
On that particular night or overall?
I, I think both would be helpful.
Okay, I can answer for the particular night. Chris can do overall.
Yeah.
On that particular night, there's only probably twelve to thirteen people. It's a familiar group. So everybody's sitting right in front of me. So I know, I know where the drinks are going, for the most part, where on the bar, under the table that was off to the side.
Okay, but you only know, you think she, I mean, it didn't sound like you really knew how many she had, maybe three to four?
Three to four.
Okay. And then you said you could speak to kind of your overall?
Yeah, overall, you know, it's, it's the responsibility of the bartender to make sure they know where their drinks are going when they're, when they're serving them. So, you know, they, they are aware of who's in the, in the room. You know, it's not a, it's not a large space, so anyone that is ordering alcohol in there, you know, we're watching them consume it. So, you know, it's the, it's their responsibility to be able to, you know, make the judgment on if, if they're, you know, being over-served. And I can, you know, and with my experience in, in that room, you know, we have a lot of people that will just, it'll be the same person that'll came, come up and get the same round for, for whoever they're with, so.
And then can I ask you again? I'm sorry, I just had the night off. Could, I mean, so when she came up to order her last drink or whatever it was, a fourth Corona or so, I, I mean, was she showing in your opinion any signs of intoxication?
No.
And when, and when they left, what time did they leave the bar?
They left probably within fifteen minutes of midnight, so eleven forty-five. Give or take a couple minutes.
So it's like right after they settled the tab?
Yep.
And she was pulled over a little after midnight? Okay. Because sometimes we just run into situations where it looks like somebody probably had time to go someplace in between, but that's probably not the case here. But when she left, or when the group left, did, did they show any signs in your opinion of intoxication? Okay, so you were comfortable with them driving?
Yep.
Okay, those are my questions. Any other initial questions? Board members, Peter?
I think she blew a point one-two on the, on the breathalyzer, which indicated more like six beers, is in my understanding. It's usually point two per drink, is, I may be wrong about that, but that's my understanding. You know, I, I don't, not necessarily that she'd be stumbling, falling down drunk, but she was driving drunk. If that had been an accident, your business would have been in serious circumstances financially, I would think, if somebody got hurt. What do you do if, if somebody is showing signs of not being able to drive? Do you have policies to deal with that situation?
I mean, I can answer it. I mean, if that person, in general, we try and call a taxi for them, or if there was another member of the group who was sober to drive them home, then we would encourage them to take that person home.
Okay.
Has that happened in the past? Have there been people?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay. And how often does this group come in?
That group in the summer, during when this happened, it was just on Tuesdays.
Yeah.
And then in the winter, that group plays on Wednesday nights.
Okay, but so they come in like once a week?
Yeah, once a week for the year, yeah.
So you're pretty familiar with them?
Yep.
Okay. So I think we have a video of the incident that we were hoping to view, which we would do in executive session. So I'm going to ask the board for a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the physical condition of an individual in a way to maintain their privacy.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Before the roll call to enter executive session, let me state that in the executive session, the selectmen will discuss with council and the representative for the overtime bar the physical condition of an individual being viewed on video. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the privacy of the individual being discussed. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Cheng?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Mr. Barry?
Aye.
Ms. Adachi?
Aye.
And then at the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in open session. So if I can just ask everybody that's not associated with overtime bar to step outside for a moment. Lisa, do you want to explain? Because we're not showing the whole three hours that she was here. So these are the clips of what?
So according to the app, that what we need to actually see is what the condition the person was in allegedly by the time they had their last service. So what we've done is condensed it down to when she first enters the bar. And there's a time date stamp here, which will be 11 o'clock PM. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see the time date stamp, which is done per hour.
Okay, are there questions? Um. Sorry. Are there questions from board members? I mean, I, so I have a question, again, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting your name.
Ethan.
Ethan, okay. Um, so it looks like you spoke to her when you last, when you served her her last drink. Can you speak, I mean, we can't see from the video, you know, about her eyes, or if you were, you know, smelled alcohol in her breath, or what her mannerisms were. Can you speak to that at all?
It was normal.
Okay.
There was nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
How familiar are you with her mannerisms when she is drunk?
I've never seen her drunk, but she's from England, so she has a heavy English accent. Um, but I've seen her, she's a common person to be around, she plays with that group on a weekly basis, so I'm familiar with her.
Uh, okay. Uh, I'm just curious, because, um, there are definitely people who exhibit different mannerisms and stuff when they're lightly intoxicated. Um, uh, and, you know, definitely, then they shouldn't be driving, but when they aren't, like, you know, blackout drunk, you know, between those stages, and so I'm curious if you're familiar with how she acts in that state when she's lightly intoxicated?
No, she didn't seem, she didn't show any signs of anything out of the norm.
Peter?
Are you tip certified?
I am, yeah.
Uh, so what kind of clues do you look for when you're serving alcohol with somebody to determine?
Slurred speech, um, if they're standing, if they're wobbling back and forth, um, sometimes if they're over energetic, or they start changing the topic when they're speaking, um, things of that manner.
Do we, do we know what, uh, how many times you've been before us before? I, I know you have a new owner, right? Um, but, uh, how many times has Teamwork's been here? I remember at least once, huh?
Teamwork's has not been here before this incident.
Not to my knowledge.
You don't remember?
I don't, not since I've been on the board, but, but plenty of years before.
Okay. I thought I, I thought I remembered one, but I'm wrong, I guess, okay.
Could be. Yeah. Could I ask if you could, do you have, um, a policy for training your bartenders? And is that something that's on?
Chris can, Chris can speak.
Yeah, so we can speak to that, like a written manual, or?
Um, there's no written manual, um, obviously, all of our bartenders have to be tip certified, anyone that's serving alcohol has to be tip certified. Um, normally, they go through a training of, you know, three or four shifts where they're with, um, another bartender that, you know, either, um, you know, Ethan, or, or one of the bartenders that works on a regular basis, and then, you know, if we feel that they're ready, then they'll, they'll get their own shift.
Okay. Um, so, so, I, I mean, just a recommendation, something that we've found in the past is that other establishments that have a written policy, um, that's pretty helpful, uh, so it, I would recommend looking into that and putting something together, but, personal.
If I can go backwards.
Sure.
Um, this may sound odd, but apparently, we're not 100% certain, but there is a possibility eight or more years ago, that Teamwork's may have been before the board. Nobody here knows for certain.
Okay.
I, I apologize for that lack of clarity, but, uh, I, I step back on the, no, we haven't been here before. It's possible eight or more years ago that something came up that had Teamwork's before the board.
Okay. So that'd be in the line when you were last on the board. So it might have been, yeah, it sounds like perhaps. Um, yeah. Questions from board members? Nina, did you have any questions? Okay. Um, anybody, I mean, personally, you know, from viewing the video, we can't see any, I, to me, I don't see necessarily any visible signs of intoxication, um, again, you know, we can't see the, you know, other signs that you look for, so you don't know for sure. Um, I, you know, it's concerning that she blew a .12, um, you know, not that long after leaving your establishment, so, um, it's something that I think, you know, again, you want to take seriously, um, and I would strongly recommend having a, a more of a poli, an actual policy in place for your servers, um, and, you know, there are ones online, I'm sure you can consult, or any of the other establishments around here, um, but personally, I didn't, I don't view this as an over-service, but I don't know how others feel.
I have a question for Nina. Um, I, I found the video to be inconclusive, I mean, she's so far away, I couldn't, you know, really see any detail, or, you know, close up, and, and from the distance we were viewing her, she didn't seem to be stumbling or anything like that, um, uh, which would be really obvious, and it would have to be dramatic, given how far away we are viewing, but, um, do we have to, or is our option to recommend, only to, to recommend finding no violation of the over-service law, or is there some other option? If we, we just can't say, we, you know, there's not any enough evidence to show that there was a violation, I mean, at least in my view, but.
The standard is, um, you need to find, um, evidence by satisfactory proof that they served someone who is visibly intoxicated, and according to the A B C C's decisions, you need to have direct evidence as to that intoxication, so you need an eyewitness who can testify as to their manner prior to being served their last drink, not 20 minutes later when, um, she was pulled over, um, or some other indications, other circumstantial proof that is of such, um, measure that there is no other reasonable explanation, except that she was visibly intoxicated during her last drink. For instance, there are cases where someone has been served 12 martinis, um, and four beers. I mean, I think, I think one of the cases was like 12 martinis and four beers, and you can make a reasonable inference at that point, that before that very last drink, that person would have showed signs of visible intoxication. Um, in circumstances like this, I would recommend that the board look for direct evidence of intoxication, that is why the videos can be helpful. If you haven't seen or heard anything here tonight, which gives you, um, the ability to say you've, you've seen or heard direct evidence as to visible intoxication prior to service of her last drink, um, then you should find no violation.
Okay.
Okay, are there questions? Are there questions from board members? I mean, I, so I have a question, again, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting your name.
Ethan.
Ethan, okay. So it looks like you spoke to her when you last, when you served her her last drink. Can you speak, I mean, we can't see from the video, you know, about her eyes, or if you were, you know, smelled alcohol in her breath, or what her mannerisms were. Can you speak to that at all?
It was normal.
Okay.
There was nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Other questions?
How familiar are you with her mannerisms when she is drunk?
I've never seen her drunk, but she's from England, so she has a heavy English accent. But I've seen her, she's a common person to be around, she plays with that group on a weekly basis, so I'm familiar with her.
Okay, I'm just curious, because there are definitely people who exhibit different mannerisms and stuff when they're lightly intoxicated. And, you know, definitely, then they shouldn't be driving, but when they aren't, like, you know, blackout drunk, you know, between those stages, and so I'm curious if you're familiar with how she acts in that state when she's lightly intoxicated?
No, she didn't seem, she didn't show any signs of anything out of the norm.
Peter?
Are you TIPS certified?
I am, yeah.
So what kind of clues do you look for when you're serving alcohol with somebody to determine?
Slurred speech, if they're standing, if they're wobbling back and forth, sometimes if they're over energetic, or they start changing the topic when they're speaking, things of that manner.
Do we, do we know what, how many times you've been before us before? I know you have a new owner, right? But how many times has Teamwork's been here? I remember at least once, huh?
Teamwork's has not been here before this incident.
Not to my knowledge.
You don't remember, okay.
Not since I've been on the board, but plenty of years before.
Okay, I thought I, I thought I remembered one, but I'm wrong, I guess, okay.
Could be. Could I ask if you guys, do you have a policy for training your bartenders? And is that something that's on?
Chris can, Chris can speak.
Yeah, so you can speak to that, like a written manual, or?
There's no written manual, obviously, all of our bartenders have to be TIPS certified, anyone that's serving alcohol has to be TIPS certified. Normally, they go through a training of, you know, three or four shifts where they're with another bartender that, you know, either, you know, Ethan, or, or one of the bartenders that works on a regular basis, and then, you know, if we feel that they're ready, then they'll, they'll get their own shift.
So, so, I, I mean, just a recommendation, something that we've found in the past is that other establishments that have a written policy, that's pretty helpful, so I would recommend looking into that and putting something together, but, personal.
If I can go backwards.
Sure.
This may sound odd, but apparently, we're not 100% certain, but there is a possibility eight or more years ago, that Teamwork's may have been before the board. Nobody here knows for certain.
Okay.
I apologize for that lack of clarity, but I step back on the, no, we haven't been here before, it's possible eight or more years ago that something came up that had Teamwork's before the board.
Okay, so that'd be in the line when you were last on the board. So it might have been, yeah, it sounds like perhaps. Questions from board members? Nina, did you have any questions? Okay. Anybody, I mean, personally, you know, from viewing the video, we can't see any, to me, I don't see necessarily any visible signs of intoxication, again, you know, we can't see the, you know, other signs that you look for, so you don't know for sure. You know, it's concerning that she blew a .12, you know, not that long after leaving your establishment, so it's something that I think, you know, again, you want to take seriously, and I would strongly recommend having a, more of a, an actual policy in place for your servers, and, you know, there are ones online, I'm sure you can consult or any of the other establishments around here. But personally, I didn't, I don't view this as an over-service, but I don't know how others feel.
I have a question for Nina, I, I found the video to be inconclusive, I mean, she's so far away, I couldn't, you know, really see any detail, or, you know, close up, and, and from the distance we were viewing her, she didn't seem to be stumbling or anything like that, which would be really obvious, and it would have to be dramatic, given how far away we are viewing, but do we have to, or is our option to recommend, only to recommend finding no violation of the over-service law, or is there some other option? If we, we just can't say, we, you know, there's not any enough evidence to show that there was a violation, I mean, at least in my view, but...
The standard is, you need to find evidence by satisfactory proof that they served someone who is visibly intoxicated, and according to the ABCC's decisions, you need to have direct evidence as to that intoxication, so you need an eyewitness who can testify as to their manner prior to being served their last drink, not 20 minutes later when she was pulled over, or some other indications, other circumstantial proof that is of such measure that there is no other reasonable explanation, except that she was visibly intoxicated during her last drink. For instance, there are cases where someone has been served 12 martinis, and four beers. I mean, I think, I think one of the cases was like 12 martinis and four beers, and you can make a reasonable inference at that point, that before that very last drink, that person would have showed signs of visible intoxication. In circumstances like this, I would recommend that the board look for direct evidence of intoxication, that is why the videos can be helpful, if you haven't seen or heard anything here tonight, which gives you the ability to say you've, you've seen or heard direct evidence as to visible intoxication prior to service of her last drink, then you should find no violation.
If we find no violation, can we send a warning letter that says even though we didn't find a violation, we're concerned that she was arrested for driving under the influence 15 minutes after she left your establishment, and we just want to remind you that you ought to enforce, you know, your TIPS policy rigorously, or something like that?
Yes, you certainly can, you are the licensing authority for the liquor licensed establishments in your town, so you can, you can certainly send a reminder or warning letter if you feel it's warranted.
Do you want to make a recommendation, Peter, or a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that she was not visibly intoxicated, at least from the evidence we see on the video, and I, I understand that we don't have enough evidence just from the fact that she was arrested for being under the influence while driving 15 minutes after she left the bar, to find a violation of the law and, and take formal action against them, but I think in these cases, a, something in the licensing file that recognizes that there was an issue that we were concerned about, you know, I would, I would think that would be okay with me.
There's, it's unfortunate that the police aren't here, you know, because there was a funny, strange comment in the report about how she went into the bathroom at the police station, she came out and the smell of alcohol was even stronger, and I thought, well, what, does she have a nip bottle in her purse, and she's, you know, she's tooting in the, in the bathroom, I didn't know what it meant, I didn't know if it was just a, you know, she's just, she had been in the bathroom and who knows what, but then she just smelled more strongly afterwards, I didn't know if she was drinking in the bathroom, or if it was just...
I didn't read that to...
I, I didn't know, but I just wondered...
I, I didn't, it says there was an odor of alcoholic beverage, it does say she went to the bathroom several times, and it says there was an odor of alcoholic beverage that was not present prior to having entered the booking area, I, I read that to just say that it smelled more like alcohol in the booking area after she came in than it had before.
Just to clarify, I was at Concord Police, and we invited them, but they weren't able to appear.
All right.
They chose not to.
I would just like to comment that I would be against putting a, sending out a warning letter, I don't think it's necessary in this case, I think that our job is to determine whether or not there's been a violation, I mean, it's very clear there hasn't been one, and I just, I, I don't think that it's necessary to put something in the permanent file as far as a warning letter, or anything like that is concerned.
I'll disagree and agree with Peter, though, I think, you know, we need to be concerned about people driving drunk on our roads, I live, used to live two minutes from that location, and frankly, don't want to be driving home at night and get hit by her, because she left after, you know, having four Coronas, and while you might not be visibly intoxicated, it's, it is concerning, and I think it's something you guys need to take seriously, and, and I do strongly encourage you, you know, I think it's one thing to have your bartenders TIPS certified, but, you know, it's something that should be refreshed and gone over, and there should be a formal policy around it, you know, we've seen establishments here that have much better policies, I think, take this more seriously, so I would concur with Peter's recommendation.
I, I understand Ching Sun's point, and, but I guess I would still like to see something in the file, I'm not even really talking about a warning letter, other than the fact that, you know, the chief asked for a hearing, we held a hearing, we found no violation, we want to reiterate our recommendation that you have a written policy in place for employees regarding the TIPS certification and the policies for dealing with serving alcohol, so I'll recommend that, I guess I draft something, and Katie, you can sign it, and...
So you probably want to make a motion to find no violation, though?
Yeah, I'll move that we find no violation of the statute.
And do you want to also say, but include a letter?
But recommend that we include a letter in the file recommending a written TIPS policy and enforcing...
Can we split the motion into two? I would like to vote against the letter, but vote in favor of finding no, no violation?
Sure, yeah, so the first, first...
Retract your motion.
First motion is finding no violation of the statute, no over-service, I guess.
Second.
All right, are there other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Would you like to make another question?
Oh, okay, so I'll move that I draft a letter to put it in the licensing file recommending a written policy.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Okay. All right, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We should probably move on. Okay, so I think the last item we have is Minuteman, so we talked about this a couple weeks ago, and hopefully people have been... Okay, five-minute break, and then we'll come back. Thank you, Nina. Goodnight. Should call you, though. So, again, we, we talked about Minuteman a few weeks, well, we've been talking about it forever, but, a few weeks ago, but a few things have conspired since then, hopefully everybody's kind of read the emails for, that Janet's forwarded, or that we've been included on, but Janet, do you want to summarize sort of what's happened, and where we are, and the decisions we need to talk about tonight?
Yeah, we, the Board of Selectment reps met last Thursday, and at that point, I had reported informally that this board was, had balked at calling another special town meeting, and also wasn't happy about the proposed payment to the host community of Lincoln, and, which, a concern that was shared by other communities, which is why when we got together last Thursday, that was off the table, it is now going to be the subject of an inter-municipal agreement that is negotiated between the Minuteman Administration and the Town of Lincoln, and there was some discussion about that, the Town of Lincoln, really, I guess they have political issues in town, and the BOS rep was concerned about the, that the, the town needed some sweeteners to get past the regional agreement approval and all that, but anyhow, and was concerned that the building, they've generated no taxes, and people were saying, yeah, but it's been out of your control for 40-plus years, and you haven't gotten taxes, so why the concern now? And, and then, and then, finally, Lincoln, you know, decided, they, they decided, because we made a modification, anyhow, they decided to add their name to the list of towns that are withdrawing, but anyhow, so there was some discussion about that, and Lincoln even suggested, well, they might be willing to just move forward if they could have the group revisit the agreement, and, and the whole calculation of the contribution, each member town's contribution, which, right now, the, the amended agreement would account for wealth, and Lincoln, of course, gets nailed on that, as does Weston and Dover, anyhow, they, they pay a higher per, you know, pupil charge, but of course, they're wealthier, so that, that goes without saying, and, and at that, that was what, I hadn't said anything, and I said, no, we are not going to reopen that, because I can't assure, reassure that our, our town would be ready to move forward, and we're ready to, anyhow. So we went, we discussed, we agreed on, you've seen the, the proposal, take the 2014 agreement, tack in the, the Boxwell Protocol, which basically is a section that lists the towns that have indicated they want to withdraw. It was five towns when we went to the meeting last Thursday, and then, and then Lincoln and Carlisle added their names to the list, but what Lincoln's, what a lot of, number of the towns are doing, I think Wayland is probably the only one that I'm pretty sure wants to get out, but what a number of towns, including Lincoln and Carlisle, are doing is they're hedging their bets, they want to keep their options open, you know, and at this point especially, Lincoln has no idea what the town is going to have to say about it, they, there may be residents who are uncomfortable in not being a member of a district that is going to have a big building in, within their town borders, so, in any event, so that doesn't mean that all seven towns are going to withdraw. The materials that I included in the packet are, include spreadsheets that, basically, it was the Assistant Superintendent, who's the financial guy, he has projections of what the impact of withdrawing communities would be on, on each remaining town's share, and it really doesn't alter, have a big impact on Acton, and I think he's, I asked him if he would do a new calculation showing worst case scenario where seven towns are withdrawing, and, and I'm anticipating that it's not going to make a big difference in Acton's share of, of the capital costs, but in any event, there are other, I, we didn't get a complete count on what town, how many towns among the 16 have already agreed to call town meetings, I know that, I know that we heard from Concord, Concord and Lexington very early on said they would call, Arlington is going to call, so there are towns that are, and I'm sure Boxwell's going to, I think Boxwell might have already done so, and I would guess that Sudbury and, and Needham, whose reps have been involved in the little subgroup, talking about working out all these, these little wrinkles, are going to call, so I, you know, I think that there's a lot of enthusiasm for this latest amendment, amended agreement, which includes the, the protocol, the, the Boxwell Protocol, it reduces the required minimum enrollment from five to one, okay, which has the potential for persuading some of the small enrollment towns to stay in, it also provides that the school doesn't have to be located with, within the, a member districts, you know, anyhow, within the district, because Lincoln is obviously going to be the host community, and Lincoln needs leeway to be able to get out if, if it has enough issues, and then the provision that any non-member town that wants to send its students to Minuteman has to be, pay, pay tuition and capital contribution that is equivalent or even greater than what the member towns pay, that, still, I think it's subject to whatever the state legal requirements are, it needs to be reviewed, but the issue with, I think that the reason I would strongly urge that we call a town meeting is because amending this agreement has been a big sticking point for some, some communities that would like to stay in the district, that, you know, that will not, they are at risk of not, like Arlington, at risk of not approving, you know, being willing to approve the building project, which, of course, is to the benefit of anybody who wants to stay in the district, because they want to amend the regional agreement first, and they want the momentum with approving the agreement before we could do the building project approval, because their concern is that once the building project has been approved, then nobody's going to want to revisit the, the regional agreement, and Arlington really wants, among other things, they really want the proportional voting based on enrollment, I mean, and, and I think that some of the small enrollment towns were, were sort of reluctant, I think Boxwell might have been one, but it's, it's just what we have in, in the AB region, you know, on the committee, it seems to be reasonable, it seems to be fair, but we need, it, people, some of the building proponents said just forget about the regional agreement and just do the building, but, you know, you look at the different issues that people have, there's a real concern that, well, the building project is going to get nixed at some town meeting, and then, there's also some concern that doing the district-wide ballot may not be a surefire winner anyway, either, if there are enough communities that are, have issues with the existing regional agreement, so, much as, I mean, I'm not real thrilled about having another special town meeting, I don't think anybody is, and there are a number of member towns that have had special town meetings, but the hope is that this would take care of a lot of issues that need to have been taken care of anyway in the agreement, it, it needs to be overhauled, and that's what all of these revisions will do, and then, the other issue that exists is the timing of the voting on the financing, now, the, the latest proposal, and this was discussed at last Thursday's meeting, was, well, you really have to do, do it at the same special town meeting, and a number of us are uncomfortable with that, because if everybody has to vote on the, the regional agreement amendment, including who's going to get to withdraw, you're not going to know who actually is, some of these member towns will want to be on the list, but they may or may not follow through on withdrawal, and we won't know who's going to be in the district, or who's going to be out, until February is over and all those votes have happened, and I would, you know, be much more comfortable dealing with the financing issue, once we know who's out, and what the district is actually going to look like, and what the obligation is going to be like, I mean, we can rely on projections, but I, I think it's going to be, I think it would be a hard sell, that if we, assuming we were to put it on, on February's special town meeting, to say, well, we don't really know who's going to be in the district, so these are projections, and, and, you know, I'm assuming that we would want town meeting to address it, some people said, well, if you approve the financing, you don't even have to have a special town meeting, but I don't see that happening when you're talking about an obligation that's $145 million, of which Acton will be responsible for a certain portion, I think that, I think that the public, our public deserves to hear about it and have a chance to vote on it, but, so, that timing of that is still something that we're seeking advice on, I think that there are, there were members that said, we would like to know if it's possible to have an agreement, either in the regional, a provision in the regional agreement, or somewhere that says, if you are withdrawing, you're confirmed to withdraw, you cannot, you cannot participate in the vote on the financing, is there some way to keep the people who are withdrawing out of it, because, not simply because they might vote, vote nay, but they might be willing to vote nay on a matter that's not going to obligate them for anything, and that really bothered people, you know, if you're not going to have a sake, you really shouldn't be voting on the issue, and, so that, those, those two issues, the timing of the financing vote, and then, and then the issue of whether we can keep the withdrawing communities from participating in the vote on the financing, if that's possible, or have them pass over the issue, once they've confirmed that they'll be withdrawing, you know, the withdrawal is conditioned, conditioned on the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approving all of this, but the way it works under the withdrawal provision, assuming it, it gets approved by the state, then, and it gets approved next year, 2016, the withdrawal isn't going to be effective until July... year, 2016, the withdrawal isn't going to be effective until July 1st of 2017. So they'll, they'll be around for a while, the, the member communities that are withdrawing, but I, we're hoping that there will, DC is aware of what's going on, so we're hoping that DC will kind of be cooperative and help us out here. And especially given that the state has made it clear that the 16 communities had to solve this problem themselves, so. So my aim here is, I, I would appreciate feedback on the proposed amendments, but mostly I would like to get the board to call a special town meeting. And, and it will be to consider the amended agreement, but it potentially could be to consider the financing issue if we absolutely can't get out of it. I mean, I honestly would rather have, have us not have to take that up in February or whenever, special town meeting, only because it's a big obligation and it raises the same issues that people are concerned about having appropriations proposed at special town meetings have about the lack of participation, you know, sort of meaningful participation, so.
Under-
Okay, questions or comments from board members?
Under the current agreement, if we don't have a special town meeting to do the financing and it gets voted by other towns, are we, is our not holding a special town meeting considered a yes vote?
Yeah, for financing.
For financing, yes?
Financing, yeah. If you don't hold a special town meeting, you're considered, you know, approval. But, you know, I, I, well, we can talk about that too, but, you know, my concern is that when you're talking about financing, it just, I, I don't know, having, having approval by, by not having a town meeting, it sort of bothers me, it's just-
I agree, but-
But, yeah. But if that doesn't work, it doesn't work for the amendment of the regional agreement.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted, because that's what I remembered from our last discussion, I just wanted to, to confirm that that was the case. And so, you know, the, the fact that we can get appropriated something if we don't call a special town meeting is something that does bother me, so.
So just to be clear though, that's not the issue. The issue right now, calling the February special town meetings is more around the regional-
But isn't that part of the regional agreement that we can-
The regional agreement and the financing issues are two separate issues that have to have two separate votes or not votes.
Well, but I mean, can't we amend the regional agreement such that any financing done for the district has to be, such that, you know, a, a, a yes vote, sorry, a non-vote is a no vote and not a non-vote is a yes vote?
That's not-
No, it's state law.
Yeah, it's state law.
Oh, that's state law, okay.
I mean, one of the things that the proposed amended agreement does provide, and it's in, it's in the redlined version, has to do with the, the financing. There's a provision that says anybody who's withdrawing pursuant to the new added provision about withdrawal is not going to be obligated for any financing that's approved after December 10th, I think. But that's, that's aimed at cutting off the real, truly withdrawing towns from any possibility of an obligation for, for the bonding going forward. Because the problem is, is that they're not going to be non-members until, until '27 legally. So, you know, you try to find a way to limit their exposure, but also, anyhow, at the same time keeping things moving, so.
Peter, did you have questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think a big part of the new amendment is this payment by out-of-district students of equal tuitioning cost to in-district students. I thought that was state law, so, charging out of district students, I thought maybe it's a state regulation, so I'm not sure. It's set that rate or something, isn't it?
Yeah, the state, the state set, has set the tuition level for non-member students and historically has set it very low and, and at one point even dropped it, which really, and then of course, did not authorize capital contribution from non-member student towns, which just increased the, sort of, the burden on member towns and, and generated a lot of the resentment that led to all the discussion about amending the agreement and letting towns get out, so. I think that most recently, the state has authorized capital contribution, but I recall that it was, it's not 100, it's not 100%, it's not the same as what member, member towns have to pay. And the question some of us had is, okay, if the state sets it, how are we, you know, can we have an agreement that provides something different or are we going to work, we're going to get the state to agree to that? You know, that's not clear, but basically to have member towns at least contribute something is better than nothing, so.
Okay, yeah, I mean, because it reads, is subject to state law and applicable regulations, so-
Yeah, that's why, that's why that was put in there is because it has to be thoroughly vetted by council. I don't know how far Minuteman Administration has progressed with that. They were, they, they've really been reviewing with bond council and, and regular council.
It sounds like it may take a change in state regulations, but anyway. And, and this agreement with Lincoln, that would be subject to the school committee's approval? We, the individual cities and towns wouldn't have-
I, you know, the, the administration is negotiating. I mean, there was no talk of having the individual, the selectmen involved. Whether they decide that the school committee, you know, makes a recommendation and then the individual member towns have to approve it is, is something that's up in the air. I mean, they're, it, the way things are going, there may not be an IMA because they made, Lincoln may not find any of the, the proposals acceptable, other than the one that Lincoln had already proposed that the member, other member towns don't, can't support, so.
Okay, yeah, I would think it would have to be done quickly because I, there'll be towns that will say, why, you know, how can we vote on this without knowing whether we're going to have to pay Lincoln $178,000 a year or whatever it was maybe, but anyway, that's, that's a separate, that's a separate deal, as I understand it. I, I mean, I would reluctantly agree that we should probably have a town meeting because I wouldn't want to be the only one of the 16 districts that isn't holding a town meeting. I think it is important to change the agreement. Their meeting tonight to vote on, on recommending the bonding for-
No, they, I just got an email from Pam Norris.
Okay.
So I was periodically checking my phone rudely, which I never do, but, yeah, she wrote and said, as of an hour ago, they had voted to recommend the proposed amended agreement and they're postponing voting on the financing until February. So they're basically going along with what, what we're proposing, which means that, I gather, I haven't seen anything other than that, would I, but I would assume that if they're going to delay until February recommending the financing, it's at that point that the 60-day response period starts, which I think will give towns like us an opportunity to put it on our regular annual town meeting warrant, so. But I haven't seen, you know, the official word from somebody other than Pam to confirm that that's what, where they're going, but that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, I had questions similar to Peter about the IMA. I think it makes me a little uncomfortable that pretty much every other member town said, we don't want to pay Lincoln, and then they said, well, we'll do it by a separate IMA. You know, it just sort of takes it out of the control of the 15 other member towns that have, you know, expressed dissatisfaction with this, so.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't unanimous opposition. I mean, Link, Lexington's selectman said at the last meeting, he was a different guy, it wasn't the bond council, it was a new guy, but he said, I'm fine with the IMA, but as long as it's clear that it's for services that Lincoln is actually rendering, concurring costs for.
Okay, so it'd be-
So, you know, there were different conditions and I think he might have been one who wanted it to be a shorter term, because the school committee had initially considered a one of a finite term, you know, an IMA for providing for payment for a certain period and then cutting it off. But Lincoln had contemplated something that went on indefinitely and then people talked about, well, what about you have it, you revisit it every, I don't know, five years and you review, you know, just see, but just put, to put some sort of, some controls over it so it's not just sort of a payment ad infinitum.
Right.
That there is some sort of connection between, you know, the payment in real life and what really Lincoln is going through, so.
Well, I will say, I mean, I'm still not super comfortable with it, but it's not, you know, going to completely swing against it and that it's not in the regional, the amended regional agreement is good. I, you know, again, I'm not 100% comfortable with them doing this separately as an IMA, but that's fine. I think you answered my question, so that, on the timing of the debt vote, I mean, I think, you know, again, it is a bit, I'm hoping we can work out the issue of the towns that withdraw because they still are member towns, even if, you know, because again, who knows if Dussie's going to let them out or not, period, it's up to them. And then, even if they do, it's, it's not for another year, so it's not within the timeframe that we need to be voting on the debt, so technically, they still have a vote. And, you know, I, I kind of wish that there was some, I would feel a lot more comfortable with it, you know, we've all said, okay, we're willing to do this regional agreement, amend the regional agreement more quickly and get this through in order to, you know, get through the, the bonding issue. I would feel more comfortable if these towns that are pulling out, you know, would say, would verbally agree to, we, we will either recommend this to our town meetings or we'll pass it over. Because, you know, I'm just concerned that Wayland will still want to withdraw, but also vote no on the project. And it's, it's still, as far as I can tell in the amended agreement, if one town votes it down, it's still voting it down and we'd have to have a district-wide ballot or it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, no, I mean, there was, there was actually, I think that in the original Boxwell Protocol, I think that Vince Amorosa's original proposal was to kind of link the two.
Right.
But that just, for a variety of reasons that I can't even remember, because I wasn't involved in the behind-the-scenes discussions, but that kind of got nixed. It, it got, got divided up and, and I think that, I still haven't heard whether it's feasible for us to have this provision that says, you know, if you're withdrawing, you know, vote on, on the financing proposal law.
Yeah.
Now, the, because the assumption is that everybody who's saying is going to vote, vote support it. I mean, you, you can't guarantee, and then of course, the issue was, I think Carmen Reese from, from Concord raised the issue of possibility that somebody would bring up something from the floor. You know, there are no guarantees about that, but, you know, I just have to hope that, you know, the presentations will be compelling enough that people are going to recognize its importance. I mean, honestly, I, you know, DC could do what it wants to do, but, you know, honestly, if it, it really throws a monkey wrench in the works, I would be very surprised because they're basically, I mean, first of all, we need vocational education. I mean, one of the rubs against the state is they haven't stepped up and kind of really provided a lot of strong proactive support for vocational education. And if they were to kind of create trouble for our, our district by, you know, sort of preventing towns that want to withdraw from withdrawing and then just hampering the whole district because, you know, people, you can't let people out. I've gotten that question from, I think FinCom asked, well, why, why would we want to let anybody else? Well, why would we want to keep people in who don't want to be here? I mean, it's just, you have to move on. And, you know, one of the things that the district is going to have to do is they're going to have to recruit new members, so.
So again, I, you know, my, my point is that I think I would, again, and I'm willing to call it if the timing's requiring us to call it tonight, you know, sort of Peter said reluctantly, but I, you know, I would feel a lot more comfortable if between now and then, we can have some sort of agreement, or if you could bring this back, that there's some sort of agreement that the member, that the towns that vote to withdraw will agree to pass over the financing question. And then I think, you know, it's still going to make sense for the kind of proposal that was floated earlier by Minuteman with regard to having towns, only the towns that want to essentially vote no on the bonding to hold that special vote. We can have it at our regular town meeting, but, you know, to, to talk about it, you know, and have an affirmative vote, whatever, but, so that they have time to call a district-wide ballot if necessary. I think they need to still make it clear that towns that vote no, if their town meetings are too late, you know, then they need to call a special town meeting to vote no. And so there needs to be some sort of time, that 60 days or whatever is set up.
Yeah, just 60 days, yeah.
So I'd like to bring that, you know, back. I, I think that that part of it shouldn't be lost, so there's still the backup to have the district-wide vote if necessary. But, you know, again, I, I had been hoping that we could avoid a special town meeting and when it was just, you know, when we had to move this far, I think we could have, but I think we're at the point where we don't want to be the one town holding it up. And, you know, our town was supportive of amending the regional agreement in the past and I think still would be. There's nothing in the changed version that really impacts Acton all that much, so. Steve, I think we had a couple potential dates for the-
Yeah, we, we checked with the high school. They, they offered three dates, February 1st, 2nd, and 29th. They had a slight preference for the 2nd and 29th.
Okay. So working back from when we need to call, from when we need to call a special town meeting and timing for the warrant and all of that, what, what are those dates?
Well, we really have to allow ourselves really a month, and that's more for just notification, running voter registration. I mean, I would recommend that the board, when they call a special town meeting, open and close the warrant that night, because I think we just want a one article town meeting.
So I think we could wait until our January 4th meeting, then to, you know, not if it's-
January 4th would be-
Second.
Well, we can plan, we can plan for the 29th and we can wait, and we can plan to do it on either the 4th or the 25th. And I think that would be preferable because that gives us the time to have Janet go back and try to get, you know, the financing thing dealt with.
Um, okay. Let's, right, I'm just trying to think about timing of a lot of, you know, other things in town, but, okay.
What we're going to have to think about is a moderator, because the moderator goes to Florida, I mean, I think he leaves like the 8th of January, doesn't come back till like early to mid-March. So, a temporary moderator has to be chosen at town meeting, but I think we'd probably want to find somebody who'd be willing to do it.
Yeah, we don't just leave it to town meeting.
Well, I mean, you do take, you can't, I mean, the process, you take nominations from the floor, but it'd be nice to have it lined up.
Okay, so let's try to, let's plan to call this, let's add an agenda item to the meeting on the 4th, our meeting on the 4th, and if we can come up with a draft warrant that just has this one article or two.
Janet, Janet, when do you think we would get language for the article, though? That, that's my biggest concern, is we need some language.
Yeah, no, I, I, that, that is something that other people have asked about and I don't know where that stands. I can ask about where the language is for the article. I'm pretty sure that they're going to work on it, but, but I think they, they also want to get a sense of whether this is going to move. So, so we are prepared to call a town meeting, but we're not going to do it yet and we're not going to set even a date as to when we might call it.
I think, say, we'll be prepared to call it at our January 4th meeting if we have some light-
For which date in February.
Well, at that point, it would have to be for the 29th. If we can-
I think on the 4th, if we called it for the 2nd, I mean, that's doable, that, that really in essence is a month.
Okay. And I mean, frankly, I think the 2nd's better, it's further away.
I would rather get it done with-
Right. A, it gets it done and B, it's further away from our annual town meeting, having two town meetings that close together is not great, so.
I mean, in a technical sense, you only need, you only need two-week notice for a town meeting, but, but, you know, usually the clerk runs a voter registration and that type of thing, so just allowing for that.
So why don't we book the, get the auditorium for the 2nd, just to book it?
Good.
Why don't we tell them that we'll make a final decision on the 4th and that it looks like we'll call a town meeting for the 2nd?
For February 2nd.
Yeah, for February 2nd and, you know, state some of the concerns people had, whatever.
But we have to, we're hoping we'll have a, some sort of a draft and we want to resolve the issue about the financing.
Right.
And then at that point, we can, you know, I guess the 4th we call, we can close.
Right.
And the warrant as well know what's going to be on it, so.
Okay.
So, I mean, aside from, aside from the, the IMA, any thoughts about the other amendments? And on top of the 2014 amended agreement, which the Acton Town Meeting approved back whenever, 2013, 2014?
I mean, I'm fine, you know, it's eliminating the five pupil minimum is fine, the withdrawal procedure is fine, and I think the capital fee, you know, again, Peter's right that it's under state regulation, that Dussie sets it, but, you know, I, I mean, it was interesting to me that it's, they said, that email from Elizabeth at Minuteman said that Dussie had offered preliminary endorsement of it, which also made me more comfortable with this process. So, you know, who knows? But they, they are moving forward with at least allowing folk tech schools to have some sort of capital assessment. I think it was like 80%, it's not the full 100.
Yeah, and that was, that was sort of an issue. It's, it's a step forward, but it's tough when, you know, because then you want, you want some, you basically want some incentive if you have member towns, you want to have some incentive for non-member towns to become members rather than to find that it's more advantageous to be non-members, you know? Because then you, you know, what's the, where's the advantage of being a member? you know? Because then you, you know, what's the, where's the advantage of being a member, you know, other than maybe if, you know, if there's a full slate of, of students, all the spots are filled, you're not going to get your kids in if you're a non-member. But that is it. They still are going to have some openings, I think, for a while. So, okay. Is that it? Any other thoughts? No? At least it's not, you know, 10:30.
No, I mean, I think it's generally good. And then, you know, my, my questions are about the IMA and, you know, just figuring out the timing of the debt.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
This is like, this is difficult.
Okay, are there anything that people wanted to bring up about their selectmen reports? Because I had one, I just want to remind people, I put in there that the school committee had their presentation from the superintendent on his proposed budget. And I would encourage everybody to take a look at that. And I believe it's January 23rd is their budget Saturday. And I would encourage everybody to attend that as well if possible.
Till the same weekend as the MMA annual conference.
Yeah, balance your priorities. No, you don't, you can go to the Fox. You don't need to be there. Okay, excellent. Then can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?